And relax.
Countdown.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Freyolado.
Here.
Councilmember Goulamback.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Forum is present.
Let's do our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
This past season, I've been talking to people I know who own small businesses throughout the region. I know in every council district, business leaders have been massively impacted, as well as lots of people in our lives and districts who are unemployed because of the downturn in commercial activity. And the scripture that I was praying for them was Matthew 11:28 to 30. Then Jesus said, "Come to me, all of you who are weary and carry heavy burdens, and I'll give you rest. Take my yoke upon you; let me teach you, because I am humble and gentle at heart, and you will find rest for your souls; for my yoke is easy to bear, and the burden I give you light." So for those that are going through it with businesses that are on the brink, on the verge, for those whose financial picture took a massive hit and continue to in unemployment in all of our city, can we pause and pray for them? Father, thank you for these precious verses. And you've said that if we're weary, carrying heavy burdens, that you will give us rest. Father, right now, we pray on behalf of those that everyone on the council knows and knows well as they walk the sidewalks and streets and businesses of their community. They know the ones that have suffered the greatest impact, the greatest loss, some that have already closed and others that are just facing challenges that no one months ago could have imagined or dreamed of. And Lord, for those that are unemployed through no fault of their own, it's just the circumstances around them, and that's put them in precarious position. We know that many of them are weary and carrying burdens beyond belief. So Father, right now, we ask that you, the one who promises rest, would slide your shoulder under those that are hurting. Be with them. Come alongside them. I pray, Father, even now, for creativity as people are looking and thinking and dreaming outside the box. Lord, we pray for an end of what's causing such a downturn. But in the meantime, Lord, we pray for those that are the backbone of our city, that, Lord, you'd give them strength and encouragement today. And for those, Lord, that even now are looking for, searching for, striving for the next place to work, Lord, open doors for them as well. And Lord, I pray for this council and for the administration as they look at the things that would help create a resurrection for the economy of our region, that, Lord, you'll give them creative ideas beyond themselves, even today, as they come together and work. Lord, help your insight and wisdom to enliven their discussions. We ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers, memorials. Councilmember Goulamback.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Black Rock neighborhood lost the former City of Buffalo DPW snowplow driver Frank Tocheck. His son Darren works in City Hall. And Frank passed away after a little battle with an illness. Korean War veteran, you know, active in government politics and at Assumption Church, just an all-around good guy. He's going to be very, very sorely missed by his friends in Black Rock and at Assumption Church and at the VFW post.
Thank you. Councilmember Wingo. And then Councilmember Scanlon.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Chair. First, I would like to just pray for the family, ask that we think and keep in our thoughts and prayers, the family of our Assemblymember Crystal People Stokes and the passing of her daughter, Rashawn King. She was absolutely a beautiful person to be in the presence of, wonderful spirit, just like her mother. She was laid to rest this past week at True Bethel Church. And our thoughts and prayers go out to her and her children. And I just want to say that I know that Leah was very, 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 very close to Rashawn. And one of the things that was mentioned is that Leah always would mention how Rashawn would leave her two most valuable possessions in her care, which was her mother and her son. And I just want to make sure that we keep Leah popping in our prayers as well, because right alongside Crystal, who she's with her every day, I'm sure that they're both leaning on each other as a transition through this time. Also, a friend of mine, Liz Holton. Liz and I went to school together, and she was a year ahead of me. But I have very, very fond memories of Liz Holton. We actually were like really, really good friends. We were almost like best friends back in high school, Liz and I. And we just, it's amazing how her brother and I, everyone knows the great saxophonist Will Holton. This is his older sister, which of course, he allowed us to be friends. Will was kind of protective, but Liz passed away. She fought a long fight, and she prevailed even in her own way. She still exuded that love. She had an infectious smile. And as you can see, her picture here, she was just a beautiful, beautiful person, and she will be sorely missed. We're praying for the family, knew Will's parents, Will and Liz's parents very well. Ask that we continue to pray for the Holton family as they are laying this beautiful soul. And Liz's children, pray for all of the Holton family. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Beer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to remember Eladio Rodriguez, known as Jajo. He was born in Villarva, Puerto Rico, 1933. As a young boy, he loved singing and performing in his community and even performed on a famous show in Puerto Rico, Tribuna de la Arte. Jajo found success by winning the first award in 1955. Jajo's career saw him become one of the most popular salsa entertainers of this time, and he played concerts in Puerto Rico, Cleveland, and New York City. Jajo remains incredibly popular in the Buffalo community and has fans and admirers of all ages. One of his highlights won his last CD where he dedicated to his wife, Blanca Rodriguez, the simple that quiero, that means "I'll always love you." He passed away recently. He is a pillar in our community, and we're definitely going to miss Jajo as he's well-known. So to keep his family in our prayers.
Yes, sir. Did I skip Councilmember Scanlon? Did you have your hand up? Councilmember Scanlon, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you, Council President. I would ask that we please keep in our thoughts and prayers Mary Clancy, who passed away this past week. Mary's a longtime South Buffalo resident, lived on Tuscarora Road. She's the mother of one of our most active residents here in the South District. And she's going to be sorely missed. She's the mother of five and grandmother of 12, and she's going to be missing by her extended family and her friends.
Any others? Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to ask for thoughts and prayers for one of my childhood friends who lost his wife. And Bishop, you did a wonderful job eulogizing Levine Dixie. You know, I didn't know Levine, but I knew Tim, and I knew his family, and my thoughts and prayers are with him. And also, my prayers are with our Majority Leader, Crystal People Stokes. And you did a wonderful job in eulogizing Rashawn. Just, you know, it's a tough thing to deal with, especially when you lose your child. But someone to breathe life and celebrate their life is a special gift. And I'm thank you for doing that, Bishop, because I can, I felt it, and I understand when you lose a child, how difficult it can be. And also to one of our police officers, Todd McAllister, who just had a difficult time. He lost his brother about a month and a half ago, and he lost his dad this past week, which I believe was his died at True Bethel as well. Just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Definitely as we go into the holiday season, it's difficult to enjoy that time when you lose the one you love. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It has been a very busy season, unfortunately, at True Bethel for so many of these homegoings. As a matter of fact, Ms. Holton will be laid to rest, I believe, according to my notes here, on Saturday, November the 14th, from the True Bethel Church. So we're thankful for the staff there that has taken on so many of these services. And as we always do, we remember those who have given their life since our last meeting for the freedom of our country and for the freedom of others. We pause now for a moment of silence. Thank you. There are special presentations from council, beginning with Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you very much, Council President. It is an honor for me today to recognize a community leader. Prish Moran has a history of showing support for our community by investing in our community. Moran is a successful businesswoman, trailblazer, and leader. She came to Buffalo in 1996 to restore homes and worked as a decorative painter. Moran opened Sweetness Seven on the West Side 12 years ago and sparked revitalization on Grant Street. And I know this because I've been in office for 12 years, and most of my business meetings and community meetings and events, I hold them right there at Sweetness Seven. She has opened her businesses to immigrants and refugees, new wave of folks that have moved into the West Side, and it is a gathering place where people meet. She bought that building, I believe, for $112,000. Seven apartments, five storefronts. She brought the building back to life at a time where people were disinvesting and leaving the neighborhood. She saw something in the building on the West Side, and she invested in that community. And since then, we have seen further reinvestment and investment as a result of her investment in the community. I hate to see her leave. I know that she still, I believe, owns the building and will be, will be under new management. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank Prish Moran for all she's done for that business district and that quarter that's still coming back. But you were such an important part in the revitalization of Grant Street. And I know even my staff, they meet there as well. I know I have Councilmember Mitch Noakowski that worked in my office, and we held numerous events right there at Sweetness Seven. So Prish, thank you for all you do. We wish you the best in whatever it is you do. She's with us right now. I don't know if she'd like to say a few words.
Hi, David. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I want to thank you so much for this great honor. I don't want to take your time. I do have so much to say. But in all honesty, you and I started out together, and I remember it fondly. You know, it's been a great ride. It's much more than I ever expected. I'm an artist. I'm a painter. I ended up loving the neighborhood and the people, which is why I ran the restaurant. And I learned as I went along, but in the end, it took so much more time and energy than my nature, my soul could give any longer. I've loved it. I've loved everything about it, and I will stay connected. As you said, I do own the building because I want to keep my feet planted here. But I have so many thanks for even the city itself, yourself, all the council people, any inspector, the patience, the kindness, the direction I was given as I restored that big project. And I hope it stands up for another 100 years and, you know, just gives the joy of people entering the West Side on that beautiful corner that we were able to save that beautiful building. But it's because of people like yourselves that I stayed so long, because to pick up the phone and get help, get direction, that's invaluable. And I don't know if I'd find that anywhere else in the world, but Buffalo gave that to me. And I'm very, very thankful, thankful for everything, the public schools, raising my three kids. It's been great, and I thank you for this honor, truly.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd like to just note, Councilmember Rivera, as a former staffer of yours, I made more meetings at Sweetness Seven. I'd be considered a satellite office. But I do want to also make a note that Sweetness Seven will still be open.
Correct.
So please patron it.
Yes, I sold it to my manager, my longtime manager, who's now going to live his dream and run the cafe. I heard it every single day, "When are you going to give me this place?" And Rob Fuzell and his wife will be running the cafe, so it will be opening soon.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Prish. Thank you, Councilmember Beer. Any other special presentations? All right. Hearing none. We will go into our meeting on a motion by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Scanlon. The minutes of the stated meeting held on October 13th, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to the late files that are before you? Hearing no objections. We will hear the entire agenda, taking some items out of order. Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Chairman, can we move to take items five out of CD and 41 out of order?
All right. So move, seconded by Councilmember Wingo. Item 41.
Item 41, declaring a climate crisis.
This item is open? This item is open. Is there someone to speak on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this out of order. I wanted to welcome members of the Youth Climate Council here today with us in our virtual chambers. As a group, they began a campaign in 2019 to declare a climate emergency in the city of Buffalo. Now, by declaring a climate emergency here in the city of Buffalo, we as a city are declaring our commitment to a greener, healthier, and more environmentally friendly city, while also acknowledging that the time is now to address, this is a priority, and that we as a city need to select greener and more sustainable solutions as our city continues to redevelop and grow. Every city, county, and state need to play their role for a better future. And today, we declare that in the city of Buffalo, that we will be playing ours. I really want to congratulate the Youth Council, who is with us here today, a meeting with council members drafting items and resolutions, speaking within committee, and now to the finish line, the approval of this resolution. So if anyone from the council would like to speak, the floor is yours.
Are you asking for it from the Youth Council?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So we have two persons on that I see. If you'd like to have brief remarks, the floor is yours. If you start with your name.
Certainly. Hi, my name's Elias Khan. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for inviting us here for this really historic moment. We've been working on this campaign now for a year. It's all been youth-led. It's been a really youth-driven effort here. And to see it materialize before us on a computer screen, even though that's not what we were expecting, is, it's most welcome. And we would like to acknowledge that this is a first step, really. This is not an end-all, solve-all to the climate crisis in our region. And that is not what we want anyone to see it as. So we look forward to continuing our work with you guys towards a just future.
Thank you. Anyone else from the Youth Council? Daniel, did you want to say anything?
Yes, my name's Daniel. I've been part of the YCC for almost a year now, and I'm just so excited to see that this resolution finally comes to fruition. And I'm excited of this relationship that we're forming with the council, so.
Thank you. And I know there are others who are on. I don't see their hands up. Valerie, did you have a quick word?
My name is Valerie, and I'm also so excited to begin this partnership with you all in favor of climate justice. And I really think there's no better time than now to begin this journey because of the economic turmoil. This really is a great time to start bringing in the clean energy jobs and to start addressing the racial inequities that come with climate justice. So thank you so much for taking the step with us.
Thank you. I know I have attended some of your rallies and very, very proud of what you all are doing, because I do believe it will be your generation that if this generation doesn't get it right, that will suffer. And so you having a voice, being very organized, and really having a goal, really helps this council. And I want to thank Councilmember Noakowski for picking this up, running with it, and I fully support it. Councilmember, for your letter.
Thank you. I just want to commend the work of Elias and the Youth Council. I met with several members of the Youth Council over a year ago. And at the meeting, they had a lot of research and facts, and they brought in such a strong presence to this meeting and did so much, had so much dedication and commitment to it. And I've seen them have several events since then. And to see our young people be activists and stick to things and see them through and stay on it is just so inspiring. And I just want to let you guys know, you guys are doing a great job and keep fighting. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say congratulations to the young folks for speaking up and speaking out on the Youth Council. I really appreciate your advocacy and acknowledging that climate change is not a hoax, that it is real. And a very wise book, a very wise person said, "We only borrow the earth from our grandchildren." And what we have to do is ensure that the earth is better than how we found it. And it should be all of our duty to ensure that we leave this earth a little bit cleaner than how we found it, making sure that we lower emissions and everything else that we can do to lower our footprint so that our young people, when they get older, they will have something to look forward to. And even in the Good Book, the Bible talks about how a wise man stores up for his children's children, and he leaves an inheritance for them. And we want to leave them a better, healthier, greener earth than the one that we inherited from our forefathers, who really didn't do the research to even realize that climate change was a real thing and that we actually, as human beings, are the perpetrators of climate change. So again, thank you for your advocacy. Sometimes, out of the mouth of babes, we get all of the wisdom that we need to press on certain issues. So we really appreciate you guys. So don't give up. I'm telling you now, the fight is not always going to be on your side. You know, things aren't always going to be as easy as they are right now as far as getting sensible people to hear what you have to say. But don't give up. Don't quit. Just keep on with the fight. And I promise you, in the end, you will get the reward and the benefit of all the burdens that you are carrying right now. But again, keep it up. Thank you very much. And I thank you for this resolution to my colleague, Mitchell Noakowski. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Majority Leader, what are we doing with this?
What would you like to do, so that? Motion is to adopt.
All right. I'm sorry. Everybody went off of my screen. If we can go back to where we were. Thank you so much. Motion is to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Congratulations. Thank you. Next item.
Under Community Development, item number five, abandonment and sale of portion of land beneath Buffalo River.
Motion, open the public hearing.
Motion, open the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon. And Councilmember, did you want to have any opening remarks for the public hearing? Or would you like to just wait for the public?
No, we can wait for the public and also the presentation. I'm not sure. I see Mark is on, but I'm not sure if John's on as well.
All right. So Mark, are you beginning?
Yes, thanks, Council President, and thanks, Councilman Scanlon. This is a matter that we spoke of very briefly a few weeks ago. And I see Mr. Heffron is on with me as well, which I appreciate it. This is a matter involving some environmental conditions on the former ExxonMobil site on the, really, the end of Babcock Street and Elk Street on the Buffalo River. Back in August, we discovered some contamination emanating from an outfall of the Buffalo sewer system. And we began to trace it down in conjunction with the DEC, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the U.S. Coast Guard. As a result of those efforts, my clients have discovered or identified a potential solution which involves building a sheet pile wall around the very old sewer structure that's in this area to prevent any further migration of the contaminants. Unrelated to this, but we also discovered some old piping in this line. And to give some context, this sewer or portions of it are well over 100 years old. Some of it are made of bricks, and it has old industrial lines that have made its way into it. And given its size, its importance to the city, ultimately, the DEC decided when we did the remediation under the Brownfield Cleanup Program that we didn't want to disturb the line for fear it would disturb, you know, disturb a critical piece of infrastructure. Unfortunately, that is going to require some additional work. And to facilitate that, we are looking to purchase a strip of land from the city. That's about 57 feet wide, and we don't know the thickness just yet. It's going to be somewhere between 18 inches and four feet. And we'll need that to construct this sheet pile wall. And we're working, of course, in concert with all the relative agencies and very closely with Mr. Heffron and very closely with the Sewer Authority. So that's the scope of the request. We will be paying, I think, a whopping $78 for that piece of land in accordance with the previous appraisal we had when we purchased another strip adjacent to that. So pretty much the same process that we followed the last time. But that's the scope of my presentation, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that the council may have. And certainly, Mr. Heffron has anything else to add from my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Heffron, did you have anything to add?
I think, John, you're on mute.
Thank you. Hey, Mark, that was probably pretty good to have me on mute. Thank you, Council President Pridgen, and good afternoon to everybody on this Zoom call. Mr. Romanowski characterizes the objective in the same manner that I would essentially to permit an extension of the existing 100-year-old bulkhead such that it can be more self-contained. And I think that I would not exactly agree with Mr. Romanowski's characterization that the groundwater impacted by petroleum is seeping out through or solely through the Buffalo Sewer Authority box culvert outfall. But nonetheless, there is a 55.7-foot length of bulkhead that does need to be replaced or not replaced, but added to or fortified. And that is the overall objective of what it is that we are seeking approval to do by deeding 55.7-foot-long by approximately four-foot-wide additional strip of riverbed. A few years ago, the city conveyed almost 1,500-foot of riverbed length by four-foot-wide, just adjacent easterly to what it is that we're talking about here. This would be the final 55-foot length. And I think approximately, oh, about 10 to 12 feet within that 55-foot length is where the Buffalo Sewer Authority box culvert outfall goes to the Buffalo River. And I am available also to answer any questions. And I have been working with Mr. Romanowski and his client and with the Buffalo Sewer Authority, who in turn have all been working with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the United States Coast Guard and the United States Army Corps of Engineers. and the United States Coast Guard and the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And the, the site has been the subject of some attention because it is the, the former ExxonMobil site. And Mr. Romanowski's client has taken on a, a large beneficial task, Brownfield Cleanup and Remediation there.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm not sure if this is for Mark or for John. This action, if we take, the council takes this action, would this contain, would this put an end to that source of that contamination? Or would down the road, would we possibly have to go back for further action by the council?
I, I guess, Councilman Scanlon, I guess I could probably best suited to answer that. So what, what we've discovered is there's been a historical discharge from this area. And, and I didn't mean to imply that, that it's solely from the sewer line itself. It's, it could be emanating from underneath it, around it, adjacent to it, et cetera. And we've remediated and in fact created what, what we euphemistically refer to as a bathtub immediately adjacent to this, a little bit to the east on five-oh-three Elk Street. And that area, there's a gap between that bathtub area and this pipe where contamination couldn't be reached with remedial efforts because it surrounds this. The, the pipe, for reference, is six feet in diameter. So, so keep that in mind. If any of you are six feet tall, this is how big this pipe is. It's six feet in diameter. And then has another two feet on either side of it. That's part of the structure. So we have, we have something here that's ten feet in width, just the pipe and its related structure. So there's soils underneath that got contaminated, soil adjacent got contaminated. All of that's, that's areas we can't get to. We, we just couldn't reach it. So the point of this is to create a barrier between the river and that remaining contamination along the sewer corridor. So we believe it should address it, but I, I'd be remiss if I were to try to tell you that this is absolutely the final solution. There's just too many variable, you know, variables here that could lead to other, we plug the dam here, it could pop up somewhere else. That, I mean, that's just the reality of the situation. But this is our best estimate on how to resolve the problem that we see today.
And Councilmember Scanlon, I, this is John Heffron again. I might add that the Buffalo Sewer Authority Box Culvert is, has been there for over one hundred years. And it was placed on, well, beneath it, there are vertical wooden pylon. And those likewise have been there for over one hundred years. And although we, we don't have, you know, all the data in, it is suspected that some of the seepage may be coming from between those one-hundred-plus-year-old wooden pylons that are forming essentially the bulkhead beneath the, beneath and possibly even around where the Buffalo Sewer Authority Box Culvert and Outfall is. The sheet piling, similar to what is already out there, will basically replace or fortify what's already out there and should hold in to the bathtub that Mr. Romanowski is describing. The area of land adjacent to the river and should address all or very nearly all possibility of further seepage in the future. I think that there is currently ongoing at the former ExxonMobil site, a groundwater extraction program that takes the groundwater out of the land side of the former, of, of, of the land of the former ExxonMobil site, pumps that groundwater into a groundwater treatment facility on-site, right there. And then, once it's cleaned, it discharges it into, I believe, the sanitary sewer. So I, I think that part of the remedy that's being discussed now also may involve some extraction of additional groundwater is down closer to the area that we're talking about. Although I, I don't think that that has been fully resolved in the plans and specifications for next steps here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, to add on to that for clarification, thanks, John, and, and Councilman Scanlon. That, that treatment system is within the bathtub area that I was referring to previously and is on almost exclusively five-oh-three Elk Street, which is just to the east. So yes, there's additional pumping going in there. We don't believe that has anything to do with the source of the contaminants that made it to the river. But they're doing it anyways. It's a precautionary measure to address it as well. So the sheet piling, I think John's word was fortified. That's the best way to, to put it. It fortifies the existing bulkhead with much more modern material, much more sound, deeper, everything it can to try to prevent anything from getting to the river again.
Councilmember Scanlon, anything else? All right. Anybody else from the council? And Chief of Staff, do we have anything that has been written into us that needs to be entered into the record since this is a public hearing?
No written comments at this time on the subject, sir.
All right. So we have had the announcement of the public hearing. Also, people were able, if they had concerns or questions, to send an email or call the council member or call the council's office. And we have no other further information for the record. So we're ready to move on this side.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Motion is to approve?
Motion to approve, second by Councilmember Scanlon. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, everybody.
You.
We need to do a roll call?
Uh, yes, we do.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number one, Declaration of State of Emergency Extension.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number two, Report of Sale Two-O-Three Chadok.
Motion to approve items two, three, and four.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number five, September twenty-twenty cash flow report.
Motion to send finance, items five and six.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number seven, Change Order Crane Library Phase One.
Motion to approve items seven through twelve.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number thirteen, appoint Coordinator of Legislative Projects.
Motion to send to Civil Service, items thirteen and fourteen.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item fifteen, Bola Rap Pilot Program Communication.
Motion to send to Police Oversight.
Second by Councilmember Gollback.
Item sixteen, Permission to Accept Grant Funds.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto? Councilmember Gollback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item seventeen, Permission to Purchase Tasers.
I'm moving to Finance.
Motion to send to Finance, second by Councilmember Wyatt. So this will be discussed in the Finance Meeting on Tuesday and hopefully back to us if there are no concerns financially. Next, next week, this has been something that we have been waiting on. Think it's very important as we concentrate especially more on de-escalation training even before these type of tools have to be used. I think it's very important to this council. But I personally am glad to see this item before us and giving our police department another tool. One of the things I'm encouraged about is the amount of training that has to go into the use of this and the amount of training that will occur as the administration has described, how much training. And I think we can't have enough training, but we also have to have that de-escalation training so that an officer hopefully will not have to use anything but his mind and his, their mind and their mouth in order to de-escalate a situation. Councilmember Wyatt, you have the floor. Did you ask to have the floor?
Sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have received phone calls and emails regarding the tasers and the Bola Raps. Regards to the tasers, this is something we had allocated in last year's budget as a form of de-escalation. And I agree with you, whatever we decide to implement, whatever technology we begin, we, we invest in the police department, it is, it is a last resort. I, I agree with you. Sometimes it's just common sense. It's just de-escalating. It's just talking your way through things. Sorry about that. And people think that they're automatically going to resort to the tasers and to the Bola Raps. And that's not what it's about. You're right, they're trained. That is a last resort. Any use of force, it's always a last resort. And I think training has, we have to make sure that all that goes into training that the use of these weapons or these tools that they have is a last resort. When you can't subdue a person, perhaps you have to use a taser. With regards to the Bola Raps, there's some concerns regarding the Bola Raps. And certainly I would like the police department to come back and explain to us how this is going to be utilized. I understand that both you and Councilmember Scanlon were at a demonstration. I, I really don't know how it works. So perhaps we can have the commissioner or somebody from the Training Academy come in and explain to us how it works and what's the impact that it has on potential suspects or somebody that's going to be, who these tools are going to be used against. So I'd like to have more discussion with regards to the Bola Rap. But I agree with you a hundred percent. This is to de-escalate and to use when we only need to use it. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Wyatt? Thank you, Council President. On second thought, I just wanted to say something because I know last night or two days ago, there was a shooting in Philadelphia and it started protests. And we are living on a powder keg right now. And whatever we can do to de-escalate a situation, especially we can look at least deadly force, deadly force is extremely important. Because, you know, it, it is, it's very difficult to gauge what's happening in our world. And we know that one thing can turn it left. And so whatever we can do to use at least less deadly force, especially when we look at the tasers, I mean, we voted for that last year. It didn't happen. So hopefully it'll happen this year. And the Bola Rap, you know, I wish I would have been able to see the demonstration. But I guess I'm open to it as long as it's something that will, again, use at least deadly force. As far as I know, I think the Bola Rap is going to be used specifically for those situations where there may be a mental health issue. And if that's the case, that may be appropriate. But we want to look at any other option to use less deadly force than what we're currently dealing with. Because it's just, we are at a, a very difficult time in our world. And, you know, another black male was shot by just waving a knife. We got to do better. This is really important. So I'm thankful to the council and the administration for moving forward with this type of measures. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know one of the items really doesn't need our vote because it's a trial period. But the administration sent it so that together we can move forward with new tools. And so I appreciate that. And we could have, they can also provide the video of the demonstration for police oversight of the Bola Rap, which basically is propelled and then wraps, for instance, around a person's leg to immobilize them. But there's a tiny fish hook that sticks into the clothing that keeps this thing together. One of the things that the administration has said is that they're going to create policy that it would not be deployed where it went into anybody's skin. So it, it wraps into the clothing, but we'll have more information. The administration has been open to sending that additional information. I think that probably no matter which way we go, there will be a portion of the community that will say, that's the wrong way to go. And this is the wrong way to go. But we heard from the community for years about the tasers. Not just a month, not just the last six months, years, and those are being produced. Of course, the community is concerned about the Bola Raps. We have to get that information out there. But I, for one, am more, more concerned about a, a officer who the only thing after verbal commands and physical restraint has not worked. The only other tool that is there is, is the, is the gun. And so, you know, we'll take heat regardless which way, but I, I would rather take heat on this side and keeping someone alive and not shot and not bleeding in our streets. And so I'm sure this will be discussed further, but I think it's important that we, we do this. Councilmember Wyatt?
And, and Council President, I mean, again, I totally agree with you. And I do have some questions regarding the Bola Rap. And I know this is a trial period in which there will be no cost. But we shouldn't know what the cost is if we decide to go that route. And that's where I think we wanted to have some further discussion, even in committee, about what those costs are. And the other thing is, and I don't know, I wasn't at the, the pilot, the seminar in which it was shown, demonstrated. But I think a lot of times we still have, we, we've missed the boat as far as making sure that we have the community engaged in this. They shouldn't have to find this out later. They should have been a part of it. And I don't know if there were community people there. But I think that could have been a nice platform to really try to turn it to the corner and for us to really engage the community on the onset and not on the back end. Because I think that even though they may disagree, the fact is they were included in the conversation from the beginning and not in the end. Thank you.
You, and I, I did say Tuesday, that will be discussed, but it'll be Wednesday, sorry, this week because of the holiday. Councilmember Noakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question on the tasers. So did this, the item that's going to finance, did we just allocate money for tasers? And this is just the permission to enter an agreement? Or did we already enter an agreement to purchase them?
So the council still has to vote after next week's meeting when it comes back. The, if it's a, a financial outlay on the, I believe, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at the screen, look over at, at, at the notes. I believe that the Bola Rap, and anybody can correct me, that there is no cost to that one. So it is here as really as a courtesy to us and as a way of further informing the community of what the administration plans to do. Anyone else? Alrighty, did we close that item out? Did we? Is it right? We got a first, a second on it to go? All right. Thank you all. Next item.
Item number eighteen, appoint Camera Systems Administrator.
Motion to send to Civil Service.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item nineteen, Foodster License Seventeen-Ninety-Nine Genesee.
Motion to send to Legislation.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item twenty, Foodster License Three-Fifty-Seven Ontario.
Motion to approve items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Can you scroll up, please? That's it until twenty-three.
Second by Councilmember Gollback, roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen? Council President Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item twenty-four, approve provides salary schedule executive director of BMHA.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto.
Item twenty-five, notice of appointment seasonal.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto.
Item twenty-six, constituent concerns regarding school zone veto.
Motion to send to legislation, items twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Second by councilmember Golumbe.
Item twenty-eight, monthly city hall incident report.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by present pro temp Scanlon.
Item twenty-nine, concerns regarding twenty-eight sixty-eight Maine.
Motion to send to CD, items twenty-nine and thirty.
Second by councilmember Golumbe.
Item thirty-one, police ID recommendations.
I'm sorry, councilmember Golumbe has the floor and again, councilmembers, when we go to full screen with the agenda, you just verbally. Let me know because I can't see. Councilmember Golumbe, I apologize.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This item in regards to the sewer authority, I would like staff to have. To set up a meeting with them. At one of our upcoming community development meetings and I would, I think it's self-explanatory, but I have questions. That constituents have been calling my office in regards to when they have the insurance with the. For the sewer pipes, water pipes, et cetera. And there's been some glitches that have come into play and I've generally been supportive when people have asked me. You know, what my opinion of it is, I always think you're better off with insurance than not, but in a couple of cases. The insurance didn't work out the way that it was promised or led. As people were led to believe, so I would like to have them in non-confrontationally. But just be able to find out what exactly does the insurance cover, what doesn't it cover? And you know, in more generic, not specifically on a certain address, but generically. What that does so that we can get some answers. Thank you.
Not a problem. Anyone else on that? Alright, thank you, sir. Next item.
Item thirty-one, police ID recommendations.
Motion to send items thirty-one and thirty-two to police oversight.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item thirty-three, supplemental amendment for agenda item twenty dash ten sixty-nine.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item thirty-four, committee meetings transcriptions.
Motion to receive and file items thirty-four and thirty-five.
Second by councilmember Bowman.
Item thirty-six, letter about city of Buffalo rental registration.
Motion to send to CD, item thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Second by councilmember Noakowski.
Item thirty-eight, special use twenty-four sixty-four Maine.
Motion sent to legislation city planning board, items thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Second by councilmember Golumbe.
Civil service, item number one, notice of appointment labor seasonal.
Motion is to approve.
Items one and two.
Items one and two.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto? Councilmember Golumback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number, finance, item number three, approval to renew contract Western New York Polygraph.
Okay, motion to approve with conditions changing the max to twenty thousand. Alright, one D number four also to approve? Motion to approve, yes. Alright, second by councilmember Farrelletto.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto? Councilmember Golumback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Community development, item number six, removing Millard Fillmore name from city property.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item number seven, concerning bail reform.
Seven, eight and nine are to be re-committed.
Recommit, second by councilmember Scan.
Legislation, item number ten, food store license twenty-five seventy-seven Bailey.
This item is in the university district. Councilmember Wyatt?
This recommit, um, chair, Mr. Chair.
Motion to recommit. Motion to recommit.
Right, motion to recommit, second by councilmember Golumbe.
Item eleven, food store license two fifty-seven Niagara.
Motion is to approve with conditions, items eleven and approve items twelve and thirteen.
Alright, second by councilmember Noakowski.
Mr. President?
Councilmember Bowman?
I'm sorry, hold on. Councilmember Golumbe?
Yeah, the normal conditions on my first one as well for the store, please.
Alright, for the record, roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item fourteen, special use five forty-nine West Utica.
This item is, this is Niagara district and is this a motion to recommit?
Motion recommit. Second by councilmember Rivera.
Item fifteen, special use one forty-nine farmer.
Motion is to approve fifteen through seventeen, approve eighteen with conditions and approve nineteen through twenty-two.
And fifteen with conditions too, please.
And fifteen with conditions for the record that will be filed by the district council member. Second by councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, draft of Carriell's law.
Motion is to receive and file items twenty-three through thirty.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto, sorry, by councilmember Noakowski.
Item forty, support for Senator Kennedy's request for Toronto Raptors in Buffalo.
Motion to adopt items forty. Motion to adopt item forty.
And do you want to do item forty-one also?
And forty-one, is that one declaring climate crisis? Motion to adopt forty and forty-one.
So, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Second by councilmember Noakowski, I think we already did that. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Item forty-two.
I'm sorry, councilmember Farrelletto would like to be recognized.
Thank you. I just want to briefly speak on item number forty. This was brought up in caucus yesterday and some of my colleagues. Were added as co-sponsors. Over the weekend, Senator Tim Kennedy. Had started a push to have the Toronto Raptors play their home games in Buffalo in the event that the border remains closed. After speaking with Senator Kennedy, we thought it would be a good idea to not only have the state senator from the area, but also. Showing, sending a message that the city council supports it as well, so it's not just. One person on an island advocating for it. You have a state legislator and the common council. Supporting what the senator is asking for, so that's why this was brought up and I just want to thank all of my other colleagues for supporting this and co-sponsoring it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And can you please add me as a co-sponsor? Alrighty.
Me too, please.
And councilmember, was that Golumbe?
Yes.
Councilmember Golumbe.
Am I on it already? I guess to be on it, yeah.
Sure you get on there. Anybody else?
Councilmember Bowman?
Member Bowman will be a co-sponsor. Alright, and we'll see Raptors. Next item.
Item forty-two, rename Columbus Park as Prospect Park.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by councilmember Bowman.
Item forty-three, Commissioner of Deeds Public.
Motion to adopt items forty-three and forty-four.
Second by councilmember Wingo.
I believe, item number forty-four, trailblazing signs are usually approved.
Motion then is to approve items. Should we call items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six and forty-seven then?
Well, let's rescind the motion to adopt in forty-four.
Motion to rescind the previous motion.
Second by councilmember Wingo. And now the motion is?
Motion now is to approve items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six and forty-seven.
Second by councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to speak very briefly regarding the resolution number forty-four, Dogman Joe. You know, a lot of people in the city of Buffalo who have own dogs. They take their dogs in as family members. And these little guys, they come into your life and they capture your heart, they capture all of your time. So essentially they send the, the little guys over to the expert. And the expert is none other than Joseph Myrie. He's known as Dogman Joe. Dogman Joe lives in the Maston District. He has family who lives in the Maston District. His sister lives in Maston District. They have been committed to the community, to the community for a very long time. He has been an advocate. He worked as a canine trainer. On the Buffalo Police Department and throughout the Buffalo community. He does a lot of work. I know that he personally. Takes care of our controllers, little guy. Well, not little guy anymore, but you know. He, he has done so much. He had a business of training dogs in the Maston District. As well, and so what we want to do is make sure that Dogman Joe. Knows that we appreciate all of his work, even his advocacy, not around our canine friends and family. He has done a lot of work in our community regarding community advocacy and ensuring that people's had. A higher level of quality life that they could afford. So Dogman Joe has been very instrumental in our community. He lives right around the corner from me. And I was pleased when it was brought to my office to put up a trailblazing sign in his honor. So with that being said, I am very, very pleased that this sign will be going up. In honor of Joseph Myrie, also known as Dogman Joe in the Maston District. And I'm praying that this sign will be a reminder, constant reminder of his contributions to the community. Not just in the Maston District, but in the city of Buffalo. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? I'm sorry.
Can we revisit item thirty-three?
Can, can we save the revisit to the end? Because we have a couple of items.
Okay.
We may have a couple of items, but I have it written down though. Alright, next item.
We just need to do roll call in the last forty-four to forty-seven.
Alright, roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
The last item, sir.
Last item? Alright, then we had to revisit on one item. It was only one item.
Correct, item thirty?
Yes, sir. Motion is revisit item thirty-three, second by councilmember Farrelletto. Item thirty-three?
Can you wait?
Who was asking to revisit? It was for a, to change the.
Previous motion was to send to legislation, is that correct?
Right. And I was, I got a note that it should be receiving file.
Motion to rescind the previous motion.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Motion is now to receive and file.
Second by councilmember Wyatt. Alright, announcements. Council President? Yes, councilmember Wyatt?
I, I just saw something and I just wanted to make it clear because people were, said that we received and filed Carriell's Law. That is not the item. We've already approved. Carriell's Law and it's before the mayor, so the item that we had was a draft that we received. That we received and filed, it wasn't actually the item that we approved. So I just want to make sure people are clear on that.
Anyone else? Announcements? Let me get Bethany's announcement, yeah?
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bfloc. Regular committees, committee on civil service, Wednesday, November fourth at nine forty-five AM. Committee on finance following civil service at ten AM. Committee on legislation, Wednesday, November fourth at one PM. Committee on community development, Wednesday, November fourth at two PM. Special committees, committee on police oversight, Tuesday, November tenth at eleven AM.
Alright, councilmembers announcements. Councilmember Wingo, councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you. So this year, we will not be having the Maston District. Halloween extravaganza at the Science Museum due to social distancing. We want folks to be safe this year. So there will be an event hosted, co-sponsored by Maston District Office, but hosted by Pastor Kenny Simmons. At the Cold Spring Bible Church, Bible Chapel at one hundred Northland. And that will be from two PM to five PM. Alright, that'll be Saturday, two PM to five PM. You'll be able to find the information on the Maston District website, Facebook page, I'm sorry, coming up soon. So again. The Cold Spring Bible Chapel, Pastor Kenny Simmons. Will be hosting the Halloween event. It's not really a Halloween event, it's a trunk or treat. And you know, of course, Pastor Simmons is very active in our community and we appreciate him allowing us to partner with him. On this endeavor to ensure that our kids are being safe, our families are being safe. Everyone will be socially distanced and come by the church at one hundred Northland and get the candy that is free. That we have provided for you. And again, this is in partnership with the Maston District Office and Pastor Kenny Simmons, who was the pastor of the Cold Spring. Bible Church at one hundred Northland, Saturday between the hours of two PM and five PM. See you all there with your, with your costumes. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you. Just want to invite the residents of the university districts to our sweet treat giveaway. We are partnering with Greater Faith Bible Tabernacle at three ninety-one Edison Avenue. This Saturday from two to four, we're asking people to wear their costumes. And we're going to make sure, we want people to make sure they wear their mask and they social distance. But we want to again, give our young people an opportunity to have their outlet to still enjoy. The, the time of Halloween, even in the midst of a pandemic, as long as we are being safe. They can wear their mask, they can wear their costumes and they can actually wear their face mask underneath their costume, but we're encouraging them to come out. We want to thank. Pastor Ferrier for continuing to partner with the university district and just meeting the needs of the community. So again, that's October thirty-first. From two to four, three ninety-one Edison at Greater Faith Bible Tabernacle. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we are doing beggars' nights, a big deal in my district, especially in Kaiser Town and Lovejoy. On Clinton Street, on beggars' night, so that's Friday the thirtieth from six to eight. We'll be working with the Kaiser Town Friends Association to hand out bags at Clinton and Weiss. We'll be on Lovejoy. We're working with the Lovejoy Association. Same thing, beggars' night, six to eight. And then on Halloween. From twelve to two at the Schiller Park Senior Center, twenty fifty-seven Genesee. We will also be handing out bags, a socially distant, safe event, wear your mask and more information will be on my Facebook page. We will also be handing out bags, a socially distant, safe event, wear your mask and more information will be on my Facebook page. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Residents of the Fillmore District are encouraged to do a, or come join us for a harvest day at the central terminal. We've teamed up with United States Congressman, uh, Brian Higgins, legislator Howard Johnson, myself. Brian, uh, Councilor Brian Bowman and we'll be having hamburgers and hot dogs, free flu shots, uh, candy, information. You name it, come on from, on eleven AM, uh, until supplies run out at the central terminal.
Alright, any other announcements?
Did the council member say they were giving away free shots?
Flu shots.
Alright, everybody all set? Council member Rivera.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by council member Gullumbet. We are returned.